Please stand for an invocation by Reverend Steve Patterson, Temple Baptist Church.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for the privilege of coming before your throne in prayer. And Lord, we recognize you as sovereign. Lord, we thank you for a community that still considers prayer important, and we thank you for this privilege tonight. Father, I pray for the administrators of this city, for these city council people, and Father, I pray that you would fill their hearts with your compassion. I pray that you fill their minds with your wisdom, and I pray that you give them courage to do what is right. Father, bless them tonight. May you fill this place, and may all that's done be pleasing to you. We ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Roll call. Councilman DeGerris.
Here.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Here.
Councilwoman Branham.
Here.
Councilman Tinsley.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Potam Russian.
Here.
Mayor Pearson.
Here.
Seven. Disclosure of interest: Any member of the city council may discuss any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none, moving forward. Citizens input: Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda.
Mayor.
Yes.
The police council. I had the group of students in the summer school that I was privileged to go talk to, and they did a mock council meeting. This is sixth and seventh grade kids. And the item that they passed a bill on unanimously was no sagging. So, you know, see the undergarments?
Yeah.
Of the vehicles?
Yeah.
Are under the pants from their sagging. I thought, I know there's some of my generation that it bothers. I didn't realize that a generation went down that far and it spanned that much. I mean, they did a lot of research on it. There's been a lot of towns that passed it, and I'd like for the council to consider a possible ordinance banning the sagging in the city of Popper Bluff.
I'd entertain that.
I think it's an excellent idea. Chief, I hate to put you on the spot, is this something we can enforce?
Mark, read it out, Mark.[164.84][164.84](Laughter).
I am, if Mr. DeGerris and I set on the agenda, or whatever we need to do, I would second to place it on.
We'll put it on there. Anyone else?
There are several sample ordinances from other cities, too, that I've already sampled, ignoring them, that we can get.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Workshop required items. Item A: The director of the downtown Popper Bluff will appear before the city council seeking permission to obtain a license to sell alcohol at the Iron Horse Festival 2014.
Good evening. Thank you. Penny McGath, Director for Downtown Popper Bluff. You should have gotten a letter about Iron Horse Festival in the past. This is the fifth year for doing the festival. This will be my third Iron Horse Festival. Each year, we have been able to have alcohol sales. We don't sell it, but we have a couple of vendors that sell alcohol, and we're seeking permission to be able to do that again. We've not had any issues since I've been doing the festival with alcohol. It's contained in one area. Our stage is down at Cedar and Main Street, and that's where the alcohol sales are, and they, we have to stay in that area. So, we don't have any problems with people wandering around with, we don't do glass containers. I think it's in cups. Do I have any questions?
This has been just something we've done the last, I know the last two years that I know of that I've been involved in, just kind of been a move it forward to make sure your festival's added success.
It has been the last two years.
I've attended the Iron Horse Festival every year, and it's always growing, and I've not seen any impact on families getting to come because of the alcohol sales, so...
In fact, you really don't even notice that it's there.
No, you don't.
Mayor, I would make a motion, if needed, that we move this to the voting session it looks like two weeks, or is it?
I think we just need a consensus from the council.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Something else I wanted to say about, this has nothing to do with that, but I saw Penny down there the other day by the Railroad Museum, and I would also say that who's doing a lot of the work is Councilman DeGerris. They started the project, upholstered up. They worked out in the heat the other day. Ended up being the hottest day we've had so far. It was, I think, three or four of them working.
Three.
And if you go by there, you'll see some, a start of the post, and they've got the framing started on it. And it, you know, we're back to where we were several years ago, and we'll be back to where we're at. Just appreciate it.
Yeah, that's very nice to see that that structure's going up for the market over there.
And the three volunteers, if there were three there who was doing the work, like I say, it happened to be the hottest day we've had, and they did a, looks good when I went by straight.
Our grand opening is Saturday, by the way.
Okay. So, we have a consensus then to go ahead and approve that?
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Item B: The city council will review a proposed resolution for the issuance of the city's industrial development revenue bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $1,050,000 to finance a project for the benefit of SCS Investments LLC in authorizing certain actions relating thereto.
I'll address this. Back in 2011, the Enterprise Zone gave 100% real estate tax abatement to manufacturing and distribution and warehousing firms. We offered the Chapter 11 to businesses down there. We were successful with Briggs and Stratton and Starting USA. SCS Investments provide warehouse space for the industrial park. Somehow, they were left out of the loop on this, and they are requesting 75% tax abatement, which is around $16,000 a year in taxes, around $900 a year of that is the city's taxes. The remainder goes to the other taxing jurisdictions. Did a little research. Cape Girardeau used this for the Procter &amp; Gamble for, they did a 25-year bond. Sykeson used one for the Orgel Supercenter for 20 years, and Rollin', Missouri used one for Brewer Science for 15 years. And we aren't voting on this tonight, but I also have, Steve Halter and Mike Persons are both here, and we also have a representative from Armstrong and Teasdale. If y'all have any questions, one of us will try to answer those questions.
Could I ask Steve a question, please?
Sure.
There's two other guys.
Ask away, I'm ready.
I just wanted to kind of get the point across to the public that what this will do in this tax abatement, which I don't always like tax abatements, but sometimes are necessary, this could potentially help us down the road. We know Nordine's leaving, and there's, potentially, somebody could come into that building and each storage space and could use that. And I guess I'm saying, we could use this more as an enticement.
It's a supplement to all the, what's considered a primary employers down there, all the factories. You know, the way I look at it is, when they initially set that up with the Enterprise Zone, the initial, the original Enterprise Zone was set up, and it included warehousing and distribution for a reason. That's because both of those operations help supplement our factories down there. And there's times, there's, all the businesses down there are very seasonal. Briggs and Stratton, obviously, Nordine was very seasonal. And so, when, if they're at their peak, and they've got excess inventory, and they have no place to store it, they've got to go somewhere else. So, it's always been a big blessing for us, really, to have some warehousing space down there. And Mike Persons from SCS, he and his group have provided those warehouses down there who have stored merchandise for about, inventory for about everyone out there, I think, at one time or another. When that Enterprise Zone ended, like Mark said, in 2011, the Chapter 100 tax abatement was kind of a way to do a continuation. We were getting zero, the way I look at it is, the taxing districts were getting 0% through the Enterprise Zone, and now they'll be getting 25%. The thing, I think that what we did for Briggs and Stratton and Starting USA, offering 75% abatement for 20 years would be, you know, a consistent thing to do for them as well. That's my opinion on it, and I think that's the opinion of Armstrong and Teasdale, and also of Mike Persons and SCS. The fact remains is, there's two things that concern me here. If we don't do it for them, and then Mike, for whatever reason, decides to get out of that operation, or disassemble those storage units, and then we have a factory that needs warehousing, they'll get it somewhere. They have to. Whether they go to Kennett or Dexter or wherever, they get into those communities and get embedded in those communities, they may move their operation over to those communities as well. And the other thing that I just want to make sure everyone's aware of is, I have very few local economic development incentives left in my arsenal of incentives. And as much as people may not like incentives, that's just the way it works. I mean, thank God for incentives. We wouldn't have Briggs and Stratton here because we've incentivized them since they first moved here in the late 80s. And I think everyone would agree what a huge part of our community they've been. And this Chapter 100 is one of those last things that we have that are, that actually help people to come to our area. I'm working with a factory right now, and I've already said to them, we'll do everything we can, if necessary, to push for a Chapter 100 incentive, tax abatements, which is pretty common throughout the United States. And as Mark mentioned, they're very common, and you look at, Cape's done four of them over there that I know of, and I think their dollar amount was, they boasted in one of the articles I read, over a billion dollars worth of incentives. But I think in the long run, those things all pay off because of all the jobs, the good paying jobs that they bring with them. So, I hope I answered your question somewhere in that dissertation.
You did, and I just wanted you to make the point, because, like I say, it's hard to do a tax abatement, but sometimes you hold your hand out and you weigh it, and you see how the incentive is better than the alternative. I mean, Mr. Persons could go down there and take those buildings down, and actually, that's the type of building he could take down and move to Kennett.
Right.
Except for that, and I wouldn't want to see that happen. Plus, I am worried about the Nordine plant closing. I mean, we've already started seeing layoffs, and want to know what I, as a councilman, will do, and I'm sure everybody here, whatever you're working on, anything we can do to further you getting another plant, but we will do whatever we have to do to make it happen. Appreciate our support.
I had a question.
Yes.
How does the mechanics of the bond issue, of the $1,000, $50,000, how does that play into the abatement?
Rob, I'll let you.
Good evening. I'm Robert Klar with Armstrong Teasdale.
It is.
Essentially, the statute that provides for Chapter 100 tax abatement requires that there be an industrial revenue bond financing. But in this case, what's actually happening is, the company that is getting the benefit of the tax abatement is actually also the bond purchaser. And so, although the city is issuing bonds, and there will be a debt instrument as part of the transaction that we will help to document, it is issued directly to the company, and the company is deemed to have purchased it in exchange for transferring the land and the improvements to the city. The city then leases the land and improvements back to the company immediately over the term of the tax abatement. And by virtue of the city's ownership of the land and the improvements, that's what creates a tax exemption. And then contractually, the company will agree to pay a portion of the property taxes over the period of the lease.
So, what is the, how do you determine the cost of the bond that the owner will be paying?
It's estimated at the cost of the project, so that would essentially be the land and the buildings and any other improvements that SCS may do in connection with the project.
Well, if you have a, I mean, I don't know if the properties are owned outright or not, but if you have a payment that's being made to a lender, okay? And then you're going to have a bond, I'm just trying to understand, what, how much of a payment would that be? How much cost is that bond versus the taxes themselves?
Sure. And again, because the company is the bondholder and also the lesssee under the lease, there will actually not be any bond payments, per se, because what will happen effectively is, the company would be deemed to make a payment to themselves as the bondholder, because the lease payments go to the city, the city turns around and makes those lease payments to the bondholder. When the bondholder and the lesssee are the same, essentially, the bondholder just turns in a portion of the bonds each year, and they get canceled.
Okay.
So, the only thing that the company will be paying on an annual basis is the percentage of the taxes that they've agreed contractually to pay over the lease term, and some minor transactional costs with respect to the bonds.
Okay.
So, there's a, typically, a trustee bank that's appointed to hold the bond and to keep track of the annual payment, and they will essentially charge a small fee each year, and the company will pay that.
But in reality, there won't be a payment, may?
There will not be a principal and interest payment. That's correct.
Okay. Okay. And then a question that may need to be answered by Steve. Steve, how bad does it affect the equation? Steve still here? Yeah. How bad does it, how does it affect the equation if you do a 10-year versus a 20?
Well, I think the, I think what's common in the state of Missouri, and Bob's done, Rob's done more of these than I have, but from my understanding, from talking to Armstrong and Teasdale and other community economic developers, are that the common year amount is 20-year on those bonds. Now, the effect it will be, obviously, it'll be more of a burden financially on SCS Investments if the less years, obviously, he'll have a, Mike actually has to, and SCS has to actually pay money upfront, so they've got to have a certain amount of years to cover, for it to net out for him. I don't know what that year, what, how many years that would mean, but obviously, 20 years is better financially for him. And I think what's probably more important than any of that is just the consistency sake of what we've done with Starting USA and Briggs and Stratton, because both of those were 20 years. That's just my thought on it.
Well, I understand. I'm just trying to have an understanding. So, when you say pay upfront on a 20 versus a 10, what do you mean by that?
Well, there's certain fees that are involved in this process. He's not doing this for free. Rob's not doing this for free, but Armstrong and Teasdale, there's, they'll have a dollar amount that, and like he said, there's also expenses incurred within the bonding, when they do the bonding on it. So, if that number's $30,000, you know, Mike, obviously, his taxes are going up to $16,000 a year, so, you know, if it was, say, $32,000, then two years before he could net out any kind of, where it would net out for him, where, you know, after the third year, then he start, would actually start saving some money.
So, the cost that they would do doesn't really double if it's 20 years? I mean, there's fees on the front end.
Right.
So, it amortizes out being less if it's 20 versus 10.
Sure. Exactly. Exactly.
I just want to bring something up here. I spoke with Mr. Persons today about why this is important, because what he could end up doing with the tax abatement is basically pass down the savings for the rent to factories that want to use a warehouse. And right now, at the, at what it exists, it's a lot higher. It's hard for him to compete with other areas. So, I, Popper Bluff needs to be able to compete so that we can bring factories in. There's no doubt. We have people that need or could use manufacturing jobs that pay a little higher wage. And at first, I was a little skeptical of allowing a 20-year abatement, but with the understanding that it would potentially help future factories down the line have a place to have a warehouse, you know, I think, I feel like I'm supportive of this issue.
I want to apologize to council. I said this wasn't on tonight's voting session, but it is. I thought we had decided to put it on the next one, but it is on tonight for the intent to do the bonds. There'll still be another time when we actually pass the bonds themselves.
And there has been a memorandum of understanding that's been signed with the terms as were described.
Kind of like Councilman Branham, I consider these warehouses as an extension to all the manufacturers down there, and we should award them the same opportunity for the 20-year tax abatement as we did the factories that they're supporting.
I feel that we cannot risk, I mean, if there is a potential factory coming to the area and they need a warehouse, and he's had to tear it down because he can't afford to keep the taxes up on it, what are we potentially losing in the long run? We can't, we can't afford to risk that, in my opinion, over a tax abatement.
I feel like we'll do anything we can to support industrial parking. And this would be like a sign that we are willing to work with people coming in, and I believe we'll go to support.
Well, my concern, like I mentioned before, is, you know, like, a company that I'm working with right now, I mean, and I'm not putting any pressure on the council or anything, but I'm just playing it out in my head. This is just coming through my head, that something like this isn't granted, and then, so we get down this process, and we get down to a finalist for this factory, and they're doing a search on Popper Bluff, and they read past history of Briggs and Stratton was taken care of on and Starting USA, and then now we're not taking care of SCS on the same level. I don't want to be in that position where we lose good paying jobs over something like this, and that's just my thought, anyway. So, that's what I'm just wanting to caution everybody on, and obviously, you guys have the decision to make, and I know Mark's asked a lot of questions, and I appreciate that, and I think it's great that, you know, if you don't know, I can get the answers. Rob's been great to work with on the last ones. Pam's been through this a couple of times, so she knows all the rhetoric that goes along with it. We don't want anyone to make a decision they don't feel comfortable and educated on, that's for sure. Thanks.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion to move this on to the voting session to be held tonight.
Second.
Motion in the second to move item B to the voting session to be held tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C: The city council will review a citizen representative to the plumbing board.
I had one application for the citizen representative plumbing board. It's been unfilled since the last time we did board appointments.
Just need to make a motion to move this to a resolution next meeting?
Second.
Motion in the second to remove, to move item C to a resolution at the next council meeting. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item D: The city council will review a new section of the code of ordinance for the city of Popper Bluff relative to prepayment or preapproval of fuel.
I think Chief Whitley's here to address some problems they've experienced.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we pulled a few stats from CAD's computer dispatch addressing this thing. The dispatchers ran it 629 of 12 through, 76 of 14. There were a total of 267 gas drive-offs, or stealing motor fuel or diesel fuel. Same time period, '13 through '14, was 159 of those. So, that's a 47.2% increase that we've had this past year on those same dates. And this doesn't include, this total does not include the ones that merchants don't call about because they had no video or a car description or suspect information that just, they just chalk it up to a loss, for lack of better terms. Conservatively, I think an estimate of hands-on action involving each gas drive-off is at least one hour, which includes time on scene and finalizing the written report. That's 267 hours of having patrol officers tied up and not performing what I consider proactive enforcement, such as burglar patrol, traffic enforcement, school and business walkthroughs, security checks, and so forth. These numbers do not reflect calls in which more than one officer responded if they did have a car description and multiple officers went in that area trying to find the suspect vehicle, or time by other officers, such as detectives who conducted follow-up investigations, or the time they spend in court during the prosecution of these cases. Manpower costs alone to the police department is $5,600, excess of $5,600. In speaking with Mrs. Hendricks down at Rick's, we come up with an average of $50 per drive-off. That's over $13,300 of merchant loss. There are 14 gas stations within the corporate city limits, and Mr. Cheshire told me he has an overwhelming majority who has signed and are verbally committed to supporting this proposed ordinance. I spoke to Chief Wes Blair this afternoon in Cape Girardeau, and he said their ordinance has been an outstanding success, just basically eliminating the gas drive-offs. So, therefore, theoretically, passage of this ordinance should eliminate these thefts, therefore preventing losses suffered by the merchants and enabling our officers to better serve the citizens of Popper Bluff. Have any questions or something, I'll try to address it.
So, what you want to do is make an ordinance that they have to pay for the fuel before they get the pumps turned on?
Correct. If they have a credit card, because that doesn't apply. And I think Councilman DeGerris mentioned something. If a particular business has, you know, known, people come in there all the time, they might have some way of making a card that they slide that in, and it's, you know, about to rushing, boom, they turn it on and go on from there. But I think it's something that needs to happen, and I think the statistical information supports that.
That's, and all the stations pretty well agree to that, then?
Yes, sir. Now, I didn't talk to him personally, Mr. Cheshire did, if he wanted.
Chief, I have a second question. Question on that is, did you want a penalty phase on that, the ordinance, that they don't do prepay, or how do you want to enforce that they do prepay?
I personally think a penalty phase would be appropriate, but that's, I'll leave that up to the lawyer.
Are there other cities around us that do that?
Cape Girardeau. I spoke with them this afternoon.
Take a look at the capes, then.
And Missouri Municipal League, I've got a couple of sample ordinances that I didn't print off, but I can get those and forward them to Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
I don't know if you want to answer this, or if Mr. Cheshire wants to answer this, but I'd like someone to explain why it's important for an ordinance to be in place, rather than just all of the gas stations agreeing to do this.
Well, a few years ago, I want to say, same right here, Bill Rick, we talked about this one time.
That's six years ago.
There was, gas wasn't close to $4 a gallon, or diesel fuel wasn't that high. And without the majority agreeing to that, yet some that didn't, some that did, and some that didn't. But with the ordinance in place, that takes the, for lack of a better term, blame off of the individual store, the city passed this, at my recommendation, or however you want to say it. And we'll take the heat on that one. But I think for the business people, I think this needs to happen.
This gas station that brought this to our attentions in Ward 1, which is my ward, and it bothers me that it's a small business trying to, you know, make a living, and here people are taking advantage and driving off when they get a fortune in gas. That's very expensive, and it's very hard for them to recoup that kind of funds. And so, I understand why they're concerned and why they wanted to bring this to us. Anyone have any other questions or anything?
No. The concern that I had, and Mr. Cheshire had answered that, I believe you said you had 100% compliance of people of the stations inside the city limits, correct?
You did a good job. They don't get better than that. And a little addition to what Danny told you was that, in the 200 and something calls that he's got there, you could probably three times that. And the reason for that being is that a lot of our gas stations, service stations are built to where, for instance, the one in your ward you're speaking of that I built, the cars face the station. They actually write down every license plate number that pulls in there because they can see that. A location such as Breaktime, theirs pull in sideways. You don't get a plate number. You can't call the police department and ask them to chase down somebody you don't have a number for. And she told me, and this is just one other station I'm talking about, there's several of them around town that's like that, she said that if she called the police department every time she had a drive-off, she'd have a car sitting there all day. But with that in mind, she said, I can't call them because we're not in position to have numbers, plate numbers off the car, so you can't call, they have nobody to look for. This is just something, as gasoline gets higher, they're going to steal more of it. It just is part of the world we live in now. You know, I sold a lot of gas years and years ago when it was 50 cents a gallon. Back then, if we lost a dollar or two, we didn't worry about it. Now, when we lose one, it's $50, or $60, sometimes $80. Now, when we lose one, it's fifty dollars, or sixty dollars, sometimes eighty dollars. So, the calls that the police department, that Danny has here on paper, is just a fraction of what we have on an everyday basis. Yeah, I've probably done this because my kids own service stations. But when I really look, I mean, we change a lot of laws because of theft, and a lot of different things. We write different ordinances because of different things. This is just one that's way past due for us. I don't even know what question.
Well, you had mentioned to me that, of all the stations in the city limits of Popper Bluff, that they all wanted to comply.
The signatures, you should have a copy of the, or of the petition.
Petition.
That's what I'm looking for. There's some signatures thrown there that I couldn't get. For instance, the only corporate company I got on there was Breaktime. She called her corporate company, and they automatically authorized her signing. Casey's, I talked to their help and their management. They said, "We can't do anything, but you can call the corporate company." I called them, talked to them. They was on board, but they said, "You know, we're looking at two months before we can get it through our paperwork to get you something." Yeah, they said, "You know, most of the country's going to prepay."
But no one objected to it.
Not one opposed in Popper Bluff that I got to speak to. There was some of the stations inside town that I couldn't get hooked up. And one was in St. Louis, the hospital, one's here, one's there. But I did get the majority of the ones here in Popper Bluff. I did not speak to one manager, one owner, that was opposed to this at all. And you're welcome to take the next two weeks and spend your time doing what I'd done for three weeks, getting those signatures, and speak with them, and I'm sure you'll find out the same thing.
The only concern that I have is, if the merchants were on board, that's the only one, because of free enterprise, capitalism.
Sure.
That's the only, I wouldn't want to enforce something on somebody. But as far as a consumer, I don't have a problem, I'm more worried about the other.
And I agree. And I am one, I think, when I talked to Mr. Branham, he assured me, prepay is something that he hates. And I can tell you that I'm standing here, and I hate it as well. But if you was one of those merchants out there, and you're losing, on a weekly basis, two or three hundred dollars a week in drive-offs, and some of them the police department's very good at getting. I mean, it happens. Some of them, they don't. Some of them, you can't turn in, because you don't get the correct, or they get a license plate on it, or it's been stolen. Or you can't, you know, it's just a lot of things that plays into that. I find that most people, and you know, years ago, we put tags on the pumps, you can usually lose your license up to a year if you drive off without paying for your gas. I have found out that a lot of times, the people that do that have the money in their pocket to pay for it. So, when Mr. Whitley's team does find them, "Oh, well, we just forgot, we got a soda, we got a candy bar, we'll go right back down there and pay for it." Those people do not get prosecuted. Most of them don't steal the gasoline if they don't have the money to pay for it. So, if they do get caught, they go pay for it, and it's a done deal. So, it's just...
Well, I just, I think the measure can be supported. I think, you know, give an opportunity to the other businesses that you haven't contacted, but workshop it tonight. No, what I'm saying is, workshop it tonight, voting on it next session, and then if they don't come forward, then they have to deal with it after the fact.
If, Mr. Russian, you don't know me, and I don't know you very well, but I'm just saying that if there was one, one location that I spoke to that was opposed to this, I would tell you which one it was. And I met with every one of them that I could find.
And Mr. Cheshire's right, we had the conversation. At that time, I told him I fully supported this for the merchants. But he's absolutely right, it's terrible that, I run down, I just, every time I fill my vehicle up, I fill it up, go home, get another one, fill it up, and just so you know what you're getting. But that inconvenience is probably worth it, because I don't want, if you lose fifty dollars, if a merchant loses fifty dollars' worth of gas, and with the margin...
It's not made up in gasoline, believe me. You have to make it up with candy bars, soda.
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be brought back to the consumer in another way, yeah.
Consumers will pay for it.
That's exactly right. So, that's what I told him that day, no matter how bad I dislike the inconvenience for me, it's still something that's probably well...
But for you, Mr. Branham, as well, you use a credit card to buy your gasoline, is that true?
No.
Do you?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Well, seventy-five percent of the business at our location, and we're, I feel like that we're in the lower part of town. You know, we're not out on the highway, we've got travelers and this and that. Seventy-five percent of our business is credit cards. It doesn't even affect them.
In my company...
This ordinance, they're going to slide a card into the pump and pay for it, and they're done. And a lot of them will come, pull up and park, and then they'll come in, and they'll buy whatever they're going to buy and pay for that. But seventy-five percent of our business is credit cards, it doesn't even affect them.
And that's what I, that's how we operate as a company. When I buy gas at your place, or anywhere else in town, we use a card. It just, I do use cash for...
Yeah. Well, I do, too. I pay cash, I don't use credit.
Yeah, and...
So, it's a little bit of a bother for me.
It is going to be an inconvenience, but it's also still something that, as Mr. Johnson said, it's passed down to the consumer. If you don't get it, if you get it, you have to charge an extra nickel a candy bar to make up for it. And as the chief said, man-hours, I believe there's more than two-hundred-and-sixty-seven man-hours, because I did report.
And I do, too, but he said he was conservative with that.
I think he's very conservative.
And we could use those man-hours in other places in town, rather than tracing down people stealing gas.
You could probably multiply that by three and be a little more accurate on the man-hours, truthfully.
I'd rather say less than more. There's not any questions for me?
I'll make a motion if it passes on to the voting session.
Second.
And that would be from two weeks from today, right?
Two weeks from today.
Motion in the second to pass this on to the voting session, two weeks at the next council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, the city council will discuss appointing ad hoc members to the city manager search committee. Would you like to...
Yes. What we need to do, to help in taking the minutes, ad hoc member, Janine Heath, would be from TRC, in case when Pam is not available. And then also the IT individual, which is Dustin Midyett, as the IT representative, in case there was a problem, that he could come in there and take care of it, and then he could just step out. And then the other thing is, Dr. Stevenson, which is no longer here, we want to fill that seat with the current interim president, which is Dr. Wesley Payne. And then the only other question I had was, we had a fireman that was on prolonged, or elongated vacation. And that hurts our quorum ability, because that's an automatic absenteeism. So, I did not know whether we wanted to, at this time, put a substitute in for him or not.
I think he's back.
Okay.
He tried to call me late today, and I wasn't able to return his call.
Okay. If he's back, it's a moot point on that issue. So, then we have the other three.
The TRC interim, or he would be a voting member.
He would be a voting member, and the other two would be ad hoc members.
If you all aren't aware, I think the search committee is using a very interesting way to interview applicants from out of town. They have to use, the college has been nice enough to let us use their facility, so that they can interview people...
From great distances.
What are we calling this?
Yeah, it's economical, because we've had applicants from Miami. We have an applicant from Borough, Alaska. I mean, so, we have people from long distances, and it just really helps economically to do it that way, through the first generation of interviews.
So, that's why we need the...
The IT member.
The IT member, and then it's just beneficial to have another person who can take notes.
Yeah, we had technical issues on one of them. We had to actually use a cell phone to discuss. We could see them, but they couldn't hear us, we could hear them. So, that was, that's how we bypassed that. But it really is nice to have that ability, to sit there and talk to them, and see them, and have them see us.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions or comments in regards to that issue?
If not, I would make a motion to move this to the voting session.
I'll second.
Motion in the second to move item E to the voting session tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, the city council will discuss the formation of a committee on insurance and a subcommittee on health insurance.
This was something that Mayor Protem Russian and Councilman Johnson wanted on the agenda. In the meantime, actually, for several months, our TPA, our third-party administrators, wanted me to form a employee committee for the insurance, so they could educate those employees more on our insurance, how it works, what's happened in the past, what's going on right now. I have that committee formed, we haven't met yet. Plan on meeting with them next week. And that would be an educational meeting for them on how self-insured works, how our plan works, and how our insurance fund is doing. I think Councilman Russian also wanted to have a committee that would review all of our insurance policies, and I'll just kind of let you address that, and...
Yes, we wanted to have the committee, and the subcommittee being the health insurance committee. So, while we're doing the committee, we wanted to have a committee that would deal with review of the policies of the city, and then try to address any issues we see there, as well as we're doing with the health insurance issues.
I believe back in, Ms. Abshire and I was on the council together about a decade ago, we had a lease that. Yeah, well, it might have been when I was first on, we used to have a committee of employees. And what Mark says, I'm involved in kind of a self-insured company. And you don't, if you sit down with the third-party administrator and they explain to you, really, the advantages of, just going to different hospitals makes a difference. You know, if you pick just certain times, or whatever, it, the cost, it makes that employee more cost-aware, and can lower your premiums, and lower out-of-pocket expenses for the employees. And, you know, when we started, we've done it several years, and it's kind of a win-win situation. Does that mean that rates don't go up? No, it's not, rates help that rates go up. But it's just an educational process where they understand, and they also have a kind of a word and a say, kind of an ownership, I guess is the word I'm looking for, they have an ownership into the health. And it just kind of gives a little more understanding, that's just my opinion.
I can understand the employees, you know, being involved in that. And I think if they're formed, if Mark just appointed them, and not through the council action, if they had a meeting, would we not have to, wouldn't have to publicize that one, would we? If it's just a group that the city manager appointed to talk about it?
One of the problems we have is also, like in the situation with Mr. Qualls. He said, you know, he wants to educate the council, too. So, you know, his request is the council be present, so that would have to be posted. And I guess it would be like an open, and maybe just sit there and listen, basically. Because, I mean, there's a lot of creative ways out there to try to save money, and some of it's pretty complicated. So, that's what he wanted to do. And he wanted the employees to have that opportunity, he wanted the council to have that opportunity. So, that's one of the things we're looking at doing in that committee. So, I guess what we'll do is, if it's just employees, we wouldn't have to probably post it. And if it's council being there, we would.
You might lay the groundwork for something, present to the council, the committee level. Because there's going to be a lot of different avenues to approach it, so do that with the employees, and maybe then bring it to the city council, right, when the committee's ready to do a presentation.
Okay.
Have that kind of the whole council, that way, they could, you know, discuss the things they were looking at, and why they were looking at it, the coverages, different coverages involved.
Is the committee a broad, I mean, everybody involved? I mean, I'll just say utility, street department, is it a committee, I mean?
I've got a representative from the street department, which would represent street, cemetery, and motor pool; a fire department, which would represent all three stations; one from the police department, then one from the water department, the plant department, the electric department, and then the office personnel utilities, which would represent all the utilities. And then we would also have one person that would represent the smaller departments, like the finance department, city clerk, municipal court, planning, and the coliseum. So... And that's basically what we did last time. I think last time, the committee might have been a little bit bigger.
No. You don't remember how long ago, I know it's been a decade, probably?
It's probably been, I think the last time we met was probably 2003 or '04, so...
I can see no harm coming from this, just myself, I just see it as an educational thing, involved employees, and gives them a more of an opportunity to see how the money's spent, and how there's cost savings, potential cost savings. It's just my opinion.
Those employees could take it back to the rest of their fellow workers, and inform all of them, and maybe end up saving some money on the insurance side of it, and see where all the cost is coming from.
Educational, all the way down to the bottom, I agree.
Okay, so, my understanding is you're wanting to do two committees, then? One for the employees, and one just to review everything?
We're going to have an insurance committee. And anybody on the council can be on that, Mark can be on it, I want to be on it. Then you're going to have underneath that, you're going to have the health insurance committee, which right now is set up with the members from the employees. And then, like I said, we'll have to work with the TPA to see what he's wanting to do, because like I said, he was pretty emphatic about educating the council. So, we just need to see if we do that all together. I mean, if council's there, and you declare it's an open meeting, we're going to be like classmates to the teacher. So, we're not going to be saying anything, and I don't know if what he says needs to be amended other than what he's educating us to. We'll have to see what that boils down to be, you know, I don't know. But that's why we'd like to set it up.
As long as, as long as we're self-insured, I mean, self-insure is completely different than being a regular insurance, and it is harder to understand, and that's one thing Jeff did want to do, is explain that to the council, of how it works, and how we got to the point we're at.
And there's down the road, there's going to be, decisions need to be made, because we're in the red on the health insurance side. And, you know, if you're going to do something about it, sooner than later. So, we're going to educate and see what the options are.
Yeah, it seems like that was continuing to grow significantly. Do you know what it's at now?
It's, I'm just approximate, about one-point-seven-and-a-half million, and, oh. It's kind of steadied out this year, but...
Yeah, lawsuits have...
So, we can't afford to just leave, it's going to have to be addressed.
Yeah, see, lawsuits haven't been bad, I think in 2014, but 2011 and 2012, we had some hits. So, anyway, we got to figure a way to, you know, rectify that, and the TPAs will help that. But we have to get people educated, so they can make, you know, informed decisions.
I've had a couple employees, and that's why I'm excited about the committee, which was your idea, I'll be honest. I mean, I wish I'd thought of it, but I've had employees that tell me they've had claims, because we are, we are running such a deficit, that we've had employees wait several months to get their claims paid, more than one, and, you know, possibly turn in a claim today, and the way it has worked, to make sure there's money in the fund, they've waited eight or nine months. And if we get that down, we can get our claims paid a little quicker. Because a lot of these people, employees especially, some of this, they're out-of-pocket. That's not their deductible, they went ahead and paid, and that gets their money back to them quicker.
Sure.
And it needs to be, you know, everybody, a working person needs their money in their pocket, you know. So, I'm kind of excited about it.
And we pay claims over a week. I mean, we had a weekly report on claims.
Yeah.
With the old TPA, I think we paid twice a month. It's been different, been different this year. You know, just for an instance, when they do robotic surgery, we had this come up a few weeks ago. It cost eighty thousand dollars to use the robot. And the hospital this person went to really pushed the robot, well, the employee didn't know any difference, thought that sounded great, well, it would have probably been around twenty thousand dollars if they hadn't used the robot. That sixty thousand dollars came out of our insurance fund, so, it's things like that. It's things like that that the employees need edu, need educated on, and things that end up saving us money and them money, so...
And I can add to that. I had two heart casts, and about a year apart, for a blockage, at two different hospitals. And the bill was 40% less at one hospital than it was the other. And that was, that amazed me. And the first time, I didn't really have a choice. Second time, I researched it, and that saved not only the insurance money for the, for myself-employed, but it also saved me out-of-pocket expense. I had time to research it. And there is what you say, you can get out here, it's like car shopping, you can, you can get, you can bargain a little bit, if you understand that it's saving you money. And that's, you know, that's what I did.
Well, if you, if you can get the same quality care, and you can get it for a cheaper price, it's going to help protect the amount of money in the fund, which they all rely on, anyway. So it's a, it's a benefit to everyone when they can exercise those choices.
Well, I've always said healthcare's the only thing you purchase that you have no idea what it costs you until you get the bill in the mail.
That's exactly right.
And...
And we're just going to use the third-party administrator, the professionals in the insurance to, I guess, inform us, instruct us, and things to look at, is the way I'm understanding?
I think, I think at some point, Jeff had talked about, you know, running an actuary on the health insurance. And that will, that will tell us where we're at in the insurance world. And then he wants to educate us of the options that exist, and whether we stay in the same situation we're in, or move to a different situation, as far as how much self-insured we are. So those are all just a lot of really deep questions that have to be answered. So that's what, the TPA will come in and help guide us through that, but it's a process we need to, we need to begin on.
I know when Mr. Rhodes was here several months ago, and, you know, they sent out for like four bids, and then, of course, the council let us approve the, which insurance it is, and at the same time, looked at one of the name-brand companies, and I think it was like a million dollars more than what we paid for self-insure. So...
Well, like I said, the TPA that currently serves us is one of the people that's wanting, you know, to work with us on this, and so we'll just see how it moves.
I think that's good, that he, you know, he's trying to, to help us resolve this issue of being in such, such red, you know? I don't see anything...
Well, it's something that can't continue the way it is. It absolutely cannot, because...
I mean, we have to address this before it gets even further out of control.
Yeah, exactly. So it's, it's a place to start, and we can tweak it as we need to go.
Well, we spend 80% of our budget on personnel and benefits, and if it continues this way, you know, the next option's personnel, which we can't afford to lose at this point.
No, absolutely.
So we do have to do something.
Yep.
Any further questions or comments on that issue?
I'd make a motion, we move this to the voting session, I guess it's for next week?
Is this tomorrow, or next week?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
The April, or, excuse me, July 23rd, in three months' time. July 21st.
Motion is second to move item F to the voting session on July 21st. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, the city council will review a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to rezone property from RS1 rural residential to RA2 apartment residential to construct multifamily apartments on Warrior Lane, and approve a resolution in support of this project. The applicant is Family Counseling Center, Mako Development Company, LLC, 925 Highway VB, Box 71, Kennett, Missouri.
I think Dennis Avery's here to address this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As stated, Family Counseling Center and Mako Development LLC are the applicants, and property owners. This is on Warrior Lane. There are some apartments down there already, which were previously zoned to RA2 apartment residential. And that's what this group is requesting, is RA2 apartment residential of 14.17 acres, more or less. You have a map that reflects that, and its location in relation to the other zoning. Existing zoning is RS1 rural residential, has been for a number of years since it was annexed. The applicant does intend to, provided this is successful, the applicant does intend to submit an application for financing to the Missouri Housing Development Commission to build 48 multifamily apartments on six acres of the total 14.17 acres included in this rezoning request. At this time, it's vacant land. To the north is RA2 residential apartment. To the south is residential RS1 rural residential vacant. To the east is a church and a nursing home, which are both RS1 rural residential. And a little bit farther to the west of the county road is county land, which has no zoning. It was annexed in 1997 as RS1 rural residential. At the time, they had no intention of use for this property, so it was left as RS1 when it came in. Comprehensive plan calls for no specific recommendations on this area, which is surprising, given its proximity to Highway 67 South, and the commercial activity that exists in the immediate area of this. Access is from Warrior Lane. Place of fire protection is available, with fire station number three being the first resp, pardon me, fire station number three being the first responder. This property was annexed into the city by ordinance 6013 on November 3, 1997. And as stated previously, due to the lack of requests for other zoning at this time, at that time, the property was zoned RS1 rural residential, which is by specific in the ordinance. If there's not a request for a certain zoning, that automatically comes in as RS1. And that is the most restricted zone, and, which was surprising when it was brought in that way, because its location along a major arterial street, and the obvious use of surrounding properties as commercial and multifamily. After it was, after it was annexed some years ago, pardon me, Family Counseling Center, which owns the large former school building to the north of it, did rezone some to RA2, and they have a, an apartment complex there, just to the north of this proposed area. Questions?
They're, they're looking to build two complexes soon.
Yes, this one, this one would consist of 48 units on a six-acre site. I believe it's six buildings with eight units per, or eight buildings with six units per. Jason Maddox is here to represent Mako tonight, to represent the case for them. And we have had conversations with him. We don't have a specific site plan, because unless and in fact they get rezoning, they won't be applying to the state for financing and funding. But we've had other projects with them previously, so we feel good that they will put together a quality proposal. And it would be submitted to the planning department, reviewed for all the appropriate standards.
I see that as a good use for that property, sitting there. If you've been down that Warrior Lane, going by, down to the end of the church, there's nothing, it's there, it's just rolled up weeds.
Right.
I mean, we might as well be getting, you know, you're getting housing, and you're getting a larger tax base, too.
And I'd like to see more housing going into the city, myself.
And I'd like to see increased tax base, myself, so I see it as a win-win.
Do they have access to city utilities there?
They do. They will have to, at their cost, extend sewer to tie into the city's line. But yes, they do have utilities available to them, and we've had conversations with some of the utility departments onsite previously, so all, some of those items have already been worked through, and they know their, what their cost and what their requirements are going to be. And Mr. Maddox does have a map, so we can show you exactly where it's at, and how it lays out in relation to the other properties, the nursing home, the church, the counseling center, and all that. And there's another church farther south that's on the same road.
This, having already gone through planning and zoning, there was no objections?
No objections, and we've recommended approval of the rezoning with no stipulations. And it was, it was met favorably in Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll get that, Jason. Go ahead. It's kind of hard to see, I'm about to ruin my voice. There are six A-plex buildings, as Dennis indicated. There'd be a community center in the, in the center of the site, with some recreation area for the children, playground equipment. And as Dennis said, we are proposing, we're going to submit an application to MHDC the first week of September. We wouldn't know if it's, it's successful until December. But in the meantime, we have to go through this process, and also ask for your support, which would be demonstrated by a resolution that would also be submitted with our application, so. These will be very similar to the 84 apartments that are built further south on the outer road, just off of the 67, that they've been there, we built them in 2000, the first phase in 2000. I think the second phase was 2005 or '06, and they're very well maintained, and maintain a very high occupancy percentage, so there's definitely a demand for housing, so we would like to ask your approval for this request.
And you're, you're right, your buildings are well-maintained out there.
Thank you.
I mean, it's not, there's no reason why we shouldn't be happy to have buildings like that on that piece of property.
I think the rents would be 420 to 490, in that range, so very affordable for the, for the market.
And what bedroom units are they?
They will be all two-bedroom. In the first phases, we built one-twos and threes, and I stay in close contact with our manager, and we filled all of them, but the demand for the two-bedroom units are the greatest. Well, actually, that was the first one. So because of that, in the second phase, we built all two-bedroom units, and they just filled up when the doors opened, so that's what we proposed in this phase also.
Anyone have any further questions?
No, I'd make a motion, we move this to the next voting session, for approval.
Second.
Motion is second to move item G to the vote, to the voting session at the next council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item H, the city council will review change order number four on the Oak Grove Road, L.A. improvement project.
You should have before you a copy of the change order for the Oak Grove Road from Westwood Boulevard to Shelby Road, excuse me. Change order amount is $344,000. There's actually $300,000 budgeted in that TDD budget for change orders, and there was also $135,000 budgeted for add-ons. A lot of this goes back to fact it was bid in 2012, and as you know, it's set idle for, going on two years now, because of property acquisitions. Fuel prices have risen, concrete, asphalt prices. And during the process of negotiating rightaways, it was also promised certain driveways along the project that increased the cost. We're still within budget on this, leaving my estimates approximately $90,000. I realize we haven't, there's one, actually two pieces of property we haven't settled with, but we're very close to settling with those. If those go over that amount, then we're going to be over a little bit budget on this in the TDD. The budget for the Oak Grove Road Phase 3, which is the west end of Phase 3, is actually approximately $400,000 to $500,000 under budget, which would help take up the slack on this. So also, there's a representative here from Smith &amp; Company, if anybody has any detailed questions, where I'll try to answer them.
I'm, I'm a little curious. What was the total? I'm sorry, again, it was 300 and...
344,551 dollars.
What, everything, does that include? I actually talked to Mr. Persons, and I understand prices go up, and he, he was very helpful to me on how things have went up over, since we bid the project, but he was talking somewhere in the neighborhood of $110,000 for that part of the project going up. And part of that was, was dirt and fuel, and...
Included in this change order is also the bid alternates for James Street, and the demobilization, remobilization fee to get the contractor. Had there been a delay, which there was a delay, off the site and back onto the site. So those were also included in those. I believe James Street was a $125,000 line item, and the remobilization fee was another $10,000 line item, so...
And that fee goes to the contractor?
Yes.
Okay. And probably the only other big question I had is, there was a fee for field dirt? Do you remember how much that?
Um...
I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me right now. Because we had a, a large pile out there that is not there now, it looked like we're, I don't, I don't know where we used that, we had probably 250 loads of dirt that was out there at the intersection.
That dirt was sitting onsite, due to the other development. They weren't able to maintain that field dirt location, so it had to be off, put off-site. So now they have to come back in and get field dirt from a different location to be able to get that...
Where did that dirt go?
Where did that dirt go?
Yeah. Because it was, like I say, 250, I'm just figuring in my head, 20, $25,000 worth of dirt, that we had stored from the far end of the job to this, this end, that we had stockpiled, and now it's not there.
I believe some of it stayed at the intersection of Shelby Road. Part of it went to the Oak Grove Phase 3 project. Part of it, I think, stayed at the intersection location. I know there was some fill put in that area as well, so...
So did we recoup any, if, I guess what I'm saying, if it went to private property somewhere, did we recoup any money from that? Did any ever go to private property, and we not recoup any money?
I think it all went to, most of it went to the Phase 3, so all of the dirt that was there was used on city property, or in city projects.
Okay. It just seemed like a lot to, you know, you start talking 250 loads, okay.
And the relocation of James Streets, that was mandated basically by MoDOT, because they, it was too close to the intersection of 67 and Oak Grove Road, so we had to reroute that whole street, which was, like he said, $125,000, I think.
Was this just not part of the original estimate? When, why are we suddenly needing all this?
Well, it's not, it's a two-year delay.
I know, but was it in the original...
The James Street portion of the project was in the original project. Some of the items that weren't were due to rightaway acquisitions. The delay isn't getting that rightaway, and also, as part of the negotiations, acquiring, acquiring the rightaway, we were able to negotiate with the property owners to put in new driveways, and that type, type of incentives, I guess, to allow the property owners to secure, letting us get that rightaway, so...
Just looking at your sheet here with the figures, I'm not seeing the 344,000 in the contracted agreed price and the overrun price. Is that, where do you get the sheet that's in our packet?
It's on page 41. Page 41.
Well, he's talking about column G, which says contract or agreed unit price. And then you have column H, which says amount of overrun or plus contingent, and that's where he's seeing the discrepancy in the numbers, from what's on our paper, anyway. Because if you have the agreed unit price on G, and you look at H, you can see where there's some, you know, like, at the top on the line item, there's $80,000 difference for rock blanket, and then we know about the dirt. But those are the two biggest signs that jump off at you.
Well, the rock blanket itself, and that was not included in the unit price.
Sure. I understand that. But I guess what, what Councilman Tilly's talking about is, when you go compare the columns, and you go down the columns, you know, you see the, the overrun on 80,000 on the one, and then on the dirt, and I guess we're trying to see where the other... I understand that, but I guess what, what, uh, Councilman Tinsley's talking about is, when you go compare the columns, and you go down the columns, you know, you see the, the overrun on eighty thousand on the one, and then on the dirt, and I guess we're trying to see where the other overruns are at, because most line items are the same.
Oh, well, majority of them are lump sum items, um, and the type-two rock blanket, it's a, uh, per-unit price, um, of the overrun.
Well, like the sewer service adjustments?
Right.
You got three thousand in column G, and you got twenty-one thousand in column H, and I understand that, but I guess we're trying to see where the, where the, the money is, you know, it, from what we're seeing from column G to column H, and accounts for part of that, I just, we don't see all of it, is what he's talking about.
The other thing I see is field dirt. If you look on, um, nineteen, you've got in, in column G, seven dollars and twenty-two cents, and now all of a sudden...
Well, they just talked about that.
Twenty-two thousand...
Yeah, that's the field, yeah, that's, they're gonna have to get more dirt because the other dirt's gone, but see, and again, that's twenty-two thousand. So, you have the, you have the twenty-two thousand, you have the eighty thousand.
That's a cubic yard.
Was that brought to the council, that twenty-two thousand dollars worth of dirt that got moved? Just cur, just curious. I, I don't remember seeing it. It's the first thing I've...
We didn't make any decisions without speaking to the city, so whatever decisions were made were brought to the city, so.
Is this not supposed to be a balance sheet that shows the difference? I mean, is, is there some numbers wrong in this, or...
No, all the numbers are correct. Basically, what you're looking at is per-unit price, the difference between G and H is if you multiply the units times the contract unit price, that's what gives you your amount of overrun.
Well, you have ones all the way down the board.
Right.
Except for the top.
Those are lump sum items.
Yes, that's, yes, sir, and, and except for the top and the one on the, on the dirt, and those are uni, unit items, I understand that. But if you could show me...
KJX provided us with a detailed breakdown of all this, that's been reviewed for the differences in, in fuel costs and, uh, and in the haul dirt, and the differences in the traffic control, for instance, um, the rental fees for, for having those for over two years, I mean, KJX provided us with a detailed breakdown of all the individual breakdowns.
They did, their part is very good, I mean, he did break his down, Mr. Persons, he did very well, uh, it just, like I say, we just trying to figure out where all that big mound of dirt went and, uh...
Well, it...
Because it's a large sum, I mean, it's quarter, twenty-five thousand dollars is a lot of money just to, that we had stockpiled for that job.
Well, what we got here, you know, and you can correct me, you have this, this column sheet, and I guess the question at hand is, you know, you know, it would be easier for me if the TDD had the ability to make those decisions and then involve the council, but the council makes those decisions, and then the TDD takes care of it, but I, um, when we look at these two columns, the figures don't match. And so what I'm saying, if you're gonna give us a line item sheet, give us a total breakdown like the KJX provided, so we can actually see it, we don't have that, or I don't see it in my pocket.
I believe in the letter that I submitted to the city, um, I think it, if the council would like, we can provide that for you for your review, I mean, we have no problem providing that to you guys.
Well, I guess it makes it better for us to be due diligence, to be able to have it in front of us.
Especially considering the dollar amount of three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, it's very significant.
I mean, yeah, if we had the total breakdown, it makes it so much easier for us to make a decision on it, but, uh, that, the, the sheet that I'm referencing, like I said, that Councilman Tinsley pointed out, we just don't see it on that.
No, I understand, and we'd be happy to provide that for the council to...
That would be very helpful.
I think what, what they're looking at is what came with that letter, if I'm not mistaken, but unless you're talking about a different letter.
I think so, maybe, I don't...
You see what we're talking about, Mark?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the change order shouldn't spill out into, I'm not sure whether...
What's what?
What's what, I mean, they got these two columns of numbers, and then they just got three, three, forty-four dollars...
Yeah, at the bottom, you have a total, and, I mean, I haven't added it up, and that may add up to be that, but column H, and that's part of column H.
Right.
Because column H and column G match on many of the items.
Well, we can go through each line item if you'd like and review it.
Well, I think what you need to do probably is, if you could forward us to us the total breakdown, and then we can, we can act upon that, because we won't have the time tonight to go through every line item as read to us versus not being able to review it.
And we had this on the voting session tonight, 'cause, uh, they were afraid if they didn't get started by, starting tomorrow, I mean, every day is important, but, uh, Mike's in the audience raising his hand, and...
Come up if you want. Oh, okay.
That part of the project, I, I don't know how we get there, even how, if it can be done, but that part of the project probably needs to move forward, they're, they're to the point, Mr. Person, I don't wanna put words in your mouth right here, but you, they're to the point that they need to get started to get done before bad weather. Correct?
Exactly, and, and I, we can explain all these types, there's no sense of...
Go ahead and come up here, Mike, if you will.
I'll just take a question at a time. That's all we have, hi, everybody.
At, uh, this, this time of year, we went so late into the year, you and I have had this discussion, so, we went so late into the year that if we have an early fall, you don't get done in time, we have a problem. Right, I'll let you elaborate on that, because you know more about your business than I do.
Well, we've been, it's been the better part of two years, like Mark said a while ago, and, and, and fuel prices went up, concrete, asphalt, everything is right here in front of us here, and we've, um, called all the suppliers, all the vendors, and we've got their increases, that's what these one particular items are, that are one at a time, they're lump sum, because that's all that the increase was, okay? All right, the other items that actually have numbers on them, you have to multiply time those numbers to get your total number, which is item number H, okay?
Absolutely.
So, the, the, the type-two rock blanket went up that many, uh, tons.
Sure.
Okay, so it ended up being eighty thousand dollars increase from the original project. All right, those are increases from the original project, the only increase from a delay of almost two years is a little less than eighty thousand dollars. If you'll add it up, it's about eighty-four thousand dollars, Peter, it's not any more than that, the rest of the prices are items that were in there, some of them already in there, but they didn't use in the original bid unless things come up, and they did in the last year and a half. And you can ask me a particular questions on each and every one of them, the reason I wanna go through this tonight is because, like John said, if we don't get started pretty soon, and this is July of the what, fifth, sixth, I mean, we're not gonna get the road built.
Well, I understand that, no.
Before the weather.
I guess, I guess what I'm asking, you, we have this column in front of us, and I see the eighty thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I see the twenty-one, all right, and I see those, but I don't, I don't see enough on the column H to add up to three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars and... I mean, yeah, but you're taking columns G, you're taking columns G, and you're moving to T H.
All you do, this right here is per square yard, it's seventy dollars a square yard, so it equals...
Eighty thousand dollars, I got that.
G has nothing to do with the total, other than if you take it by your unit price, you got a certain amount of units, and then you got a unit price that's agreed on, and then that's your total amount.
Okay, so what I wanna need to ask is, then, the, in column G, was that part of the original estimate?
It's just the unit prices.
I understand that.
It was not included in the...
So, so what you're, so what you're saying is, everything listed to the left of this column, everything listed here is, is, uh, it's either add-on or it's overrun, but we can't tell where the overrun is, it's either add-on, if it's add-on, it answers the question, if it's overrun, how do we determine how the overrun was done?
The add-ons have an A after them.
Okay.
Column B.
That helps a lot. Yes, it does, yes.
The whole of the add-ons have a two-year increase. That explains it.
That explains a lot. Thank you, that's what we need to know.
Like you mentioned, James Road is not, line twenty-four is James Road for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, you figured that that's the dollar amount you had in there.
That's the add-on.
Actually in the contract.
A year and a half ago, yeah.
The only, the only add-on to James Street is the very last line, which is two thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents.
Okay.
That makes sense.
That sounds like the asphalt went up from Delta for two years.
Well, see, we were confused, we didn't, that's why I said add-on, because we couldn't tell the difference between what add-on and what was overrun, so that, that, that helps us right there.
So, the As, the As.
Yes.
And then the only other additional item, when we spoke before, are the sewer service adjustments, which is line item eighteen.
Yes.
The city has asked us to actually lower the sewer services as we go through, because it would cost them more and longer to do it themselves.
Mm-hmm.
Because they would have to go out there right now and tear up the street.
And that's where the twenty-one thousand is.
Shut the street down.
Yes.
So, the eighty-four thousand is the actual increase of, of what it's gonna cost for the two-year delay. That's right.
That's correct.
And the A is the add-ons, which was added on in between the...
The As are the, the As are the delay.
Okay.
The As are for the two-year delay.
Okay.
The rest of it are just additional items plus bid alternates.
That makes a lot more sense.
But all the As are add-ons?
Yes.
Okay.
So, the, just getting back to the dirt, the dirt thing, do you, did you all remove that dirt, do you know where you put it at?
Yeah, I put it right there where Southern Missouri's gonna build the new bank.
Oh, okay.
Where Dumea's bringing the dirt from the neighborhood market site across the road, and we had probably, we had a lot of dirt, we had probably ten thousand yards of dirt there, and it wasn't the city's dirt, it was my dirt that I had hauled and paid...
I see.
Labor and equipment and fuel on Oak Grove Number One project, I get it mixed up, there's so many, Oak Grove Number One project, and we had stored it there, getting ready to go ahead and do Phase Number Two, and that's when easement acquisition problem came up, and we kinda got shut down, and we've been shut down for over a year and a half. So, these are the increases in, in asphalt, in concrete, and in fuel, our striping cost us more because we had to maintain traffic control for the last year and a half, and we got a lot of signs stolen and all kinds of stuff.
Yeah.
But anyway, that's what the As are.
So, basically, I think column G is whatever had everybody confused, 'cause it looked like it was the exact same as column H, um...
Well, that clarified a lot of issues, I think.
Anyway, what happened to the dirt, to clarify that, we had a big pile of dirt, and the owners of the property, before they sold it, uh, I don't know how to put this, they didn't want the dirt pile there, so it was either a matter of moving an existing dirt pile somewhere, or like, or the, the council and Doug thought that we'd just give them the dirt and we'd buy it back, because it would cost the same amount of money. You're gonna move, it's gonna cost some money, right?
So, give them the dirt and buy it back.
We'll push it off.
There was an agreement made with the property owner.
Because of the delay of the last year and a half, we could not use the dirt, and we had the dirt piled, we could not use it, 'cause we were shut down, so the property owner didn't like that, to be there that long.
I see what you're saying.
So, because of the delay, we weren't able to use the dirt, we had stockpiled quickly, before the property owner got disgruntled, so to please the property owner, we give him the dirt, and then we're just gonna replace it, because if we had moved the dirt, it would've cost almost the same amount of money as going to buy the dirt again this year.
Right, okay.
Kinda our delay, not our delay, but the delay in getting the property cost.
That was...
Added that amount of money to it.
Right.
If we'd got the property quicker, you would've had the dirt there, the dirt would've been used to build the road.
Yes, sir.
So, where are you getting the dirt at now?
Well, we don't know, we got a couple of prices, they were all pretty close, so we have no...
There's none of the leftover dirt, everybody, on the...
A pickup load there.
I'm sure there's some leftover dirt, but I don't know of anybody that'll bring it to us for free, you know what I mean, so I, I mean...
I understand, that's the expense of the dirt.
And this is an estimate, Peter, and I mean, it's, you know, it's three thousand some odd yards, and we're not tied to anybody on the dirt, so, uh...
So, we need to vote on this tonight, so that you can get to work tomorrow, so that we don't have to come back again for another change order.
Mr. Persons has already started, he graciously went out, and already, if you've been out there, tuck some asphalt up, I don't know what procedure you call that, or the term.
Milling?
Milling. He's already milled that, and it started to be ready because of the timeframe that we're in, and I just, and he graciously gave us a, I thought a very good breakdown of your, your increased cost, I really did, I thought, I mean, you were down, everybody, each breakdown you give us was, wasn't, well, just, I think it's gonna be this, each, he contacted each contractor, subcontractor, and give a price, that contractor gave a specific cost increase, took you some time to do that, I know.
You bet, yeah.
And, and we know the delay didn't have anything to do with you, how often do you run into delays in your projects that you do?
Not, not very often.
Okay.
Not very often.
Okay.
I was told by Smith, it is unusual to have two years delay.
Yeah.
Six months or something like that, maybe.
It is, I mean, actually, I thought the increases were nominal myself, for every, for the way everything's escalated.
Okay.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, this is something that we pretty much have to start tonight, or basically get done tonight, to see Mr. Persons have a chance to get done, that's a serious section of road right there, takes us right out to the schools, and I think it's something that needs to be done expedited, should've already been started, and I make a motion, we move this to the voting session tonight.
Second.
Motion is second to move item H to the voting session tonight, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we're on to action required items. Item AA, bill number seventy-seven oh one, the city council will take action on an ordinance approving change order number one on, to the Stormwater Detention Basins Project, number P one-two-zero-zero-zero-seven.
Move for first reading.
Second.
Motion is second for first reading of bill number seventy-seven oh one, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance approving change order number one for the Stormwater Detention Basins Project, number P one-two-zero-zero-zero-seven.
Move for second reading, bill number seventy-seven oh one.
Second.
Motion is second for second reading of bill number seventy-seven oh one, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance approving change order number one for the Stormwater Detention Basins Project, number P one-two-zero-zero-zero-seven.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion is second to adopt bill number seventy-seven oh one, do we have any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilman DeGarris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilman Branham.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian.
Yes.
And Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Moving on, bill number seventy-seven oh two, the city council will take action on an ordinance vacating an easement between the city of Papa Bluff and Robert and Vera Sheehy. Is it Sheehy or Sheihai?
Sheihai.
My apologies.
Move for first reading of seventy-seven oh two.
Second.
Motion is second for first reading of bill number seventy-seven oh two. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion for the second reading of bill...
Wait, gotta read it first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
An ordinance vacating an easement between the city of Papa Bluff and Robert Sheehy, I am Vera Sheihai.
Move for second reading, bill number seventy-seven oh two.
Second.
Motion is second for second reading of bill number seventy-seven oh two. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance vacating an easement between the city of Papa Bluff and Robert Sheehy, I am Vera Sheihai.
Move for adoption of bill number seventy-seven oh two.
Second.
Motion is second for adoption of bill number seventy-seven oh two, do we have any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilman Branham.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian.
Yes.
And Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Moving on to item CC, bill number seventy-seven oh three, the city council will take action on an ordinance vacating an easement between the city of Papa Bluff and Anne Greve.
Move for first reading of seventy-seven oh three.
Second.
A motion is second for first reading of bill number seventy-seven oh three. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance vacating an easement between the city of Papa Bluff and Anne Greve.
Move for second reading.
Second.
Motion is second for second reading of bill number seventy-seven oh three, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance vacating an easement between the city of Papa Bluff and Anne Greve.
Move for adoption, bill number seventy-seven oh three.
Second.
Motion is second for adoption of bill number seventy-seven oh three, do we have any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilman Branham.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian.
Yes.
And Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Item DD, bill number seventy-seven oh four, the city council will take action on the ordinance vacating the easement between the city of Papa Bluff and New Covenant Fellowship Community Ministries Incorporated.
Move for first reading of bill... Move for first reading of bill number seventy-seven oh four.
Second.
Motion is second for first reading of bill number seventy-seven oh four, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance vacating an easement between the city of Papa Bluff and New Covenant Fellowship Community Ministries Inc.
Move for second reading of bill number seventy-seven oh four.
Second.
Motion and a second for second reading of bill number seventy-seven oh four, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance vacating an easement between the city of Papa Bluff and New Covenant Fellowship Community Ministries, Inc.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion and a second for adoption of bill number seventy-seven oh four, do we have any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilwoman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilwoman Branham.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian.
Yes.
And Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Item EE, bill number seventy-seven oh five, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the destruction of antiquated records.
Move for first reading of seventy-seven oh five.
Second.
Motion and a second for second reading of bill number seventy-seven oh five, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance authorizing destruction disposal of antiquated records and documents by the Papa Bluff Police Department.
Move for second reading of bill number seventy-seven oh five.
Second.
Motion is second for second reading of bill number seventy-seven oh five, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance authorizing destruction disposal of antiquated records and documents by the Papa Bluff Police Department.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion and a second for adoption of bill number seventy-seven oh five, any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilwoman Branham.
Yes.
Councilwoman Tinsley.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian.
Yes.
And Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Item FF, bill number seventy-seven oh six, the city council will take action on an ordinance approving change order number four for the Oak Grove Road Widening Improvements Project.
Move for first reading of seventy-seven oh six.
Second.
Motion is second for first reading of bill number seventy-seven oh six, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance approving change order number four for the Oak Grove Road Widening Improvements Project, number P one-one-zero-two-four-two.
Move for second reading.
Second.
Motion is second for second reading of bill number seventy-seven oh six, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance approving change order number four for the Oak Grove Road Widening Improvements Project, number P one-one-zero-two-four-two.
Move for adoption, bill number seventy-seven oh six.
Second.
Motion is second for adoption of bill number seventy-seven oh six, do we have any comments or questions?
I have a comment. That section of road getting done is gonna be very good for the city Papa Bluff. And it's gonna, I don't wanna beat it to death, but from there to Shelby Road is terrible right now, traffic-wise, width-wise. Sooner it's done, safer it's gonna be for everybody, and it's also just gonna look better on the city Papa Bluff. And I'm glad we're getting this moved forward.
Main thing's gonna be for the school buses.
Absolutely.
That's gonna help tremendously.
I drove on that road this weekend, and I've heard a few people complaining about it. It's time to get it, get it fixed. Okay? Anything else? Roll call.
Councilwoman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilwoman Branham.
Yes.
Councilwoman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian.
Yes.
And Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Um, if you all are looking at your paper, it may not say bill number seventy-seven oh seven, I'm not sure, but on your iPad it will. Um, for whatever reason, it wasn't on, it wasn't printed on the paper.
It got added at the last minute, I'd let it off, so I went back and added it.
So, so you're not confused, I wanted to bring it up.
Is that on the board form?
No, it's, um, I'll go ahead and read it. Item GG, bill number seventy-seven oh seven, the city council will take action on an ordinance vacating an undeveloped portion of Luper Street.
Move for first reading.
Second.
Motion is second for first reading of bill number seventy-seven oh seven, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance vacating a portion of platted undeveloped Luper Street.
Move for second reading.
Second.
Motion is second for second reading of bill number seventy-seven oh seven, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance vacating a portion of platted undeveloped Luper Street.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion and a second for adoption of bill number seventy-seven oh seven, do we have any comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilwoman Branham.
Yes.
Councilwoman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman DeGaris.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian.
Yes.
And Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Item HH, resolution number seventeen ninety-nine, the city council will take action on a resolution of official intent of the city council of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, for the issuance of the city's industrial development revenue bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed one million fifty thousand dollars to finance a project for the benefit of SCS Investments LLC, and authorizing certain actions relating thereto.
Move for the reading of resolution.
Second.
Motion and a second for reading of resolution seventeen ninety-nine, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
Resolution of official intent of the city council of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, for the issuance of the city's industrial development revenue bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed one million fifty thousand to finance a project for the benefit of SCS Investments LLC, and authorizing certain actions relating thereto.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion and a second for adoption of resolution seventeen ninety-nine. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilwoman Branham.
Yes.
Councilwoman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian.
Yes.
And Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Okay, the next item, uh, resolution eighteen hundred, it says, um, it says making an ad hoc appointment to the city manager search committee, but I believe, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Russian brought up appointing, uh, Dr. Wesley Payne in the place of, uh, Dr. Devin Stevenson, who's no longer the president of the college. If that's the case, then someone would need to make an amendment to make, um, not just an ad hoc appointment, but a voting member appointment.
Madam Mayor, I think the college is a very important part of the city and should be voting member on that committee, if the school district and, uh, some of the others that are involved, they should also have a full, they have, they're a full partnership with us within the city. I think that we, I need to make a motion that we make that a voting member.
Okay, so we have, and, so are you making, we're gonna go ahead and make a motion to amend, amendment to, because we're gonna have an ad hoc person, the two ad hoc individuals.
That would be your amendment eighteen oh one.
And then a voting, and then a voting member.
The voting member should be on eighteen hundred, and the ad hoc members will be on eighteen oh one.
Yes.
So we need to change eighteen hundred and leave eighteen oh one.
We only have one resolution, we can do both of those. We can have two exhibits, one appointing ad hocks, one appointing just members to the search committee.
We have.
Okay.
I have in my pocket. I have eighteen hundred.
I got two in mine, eighteen hundred and eighteen oh one.
HH and A, aye.
I don't know how both of those got on the agenda. The two I sent you, one was the regular one that we sent out, the other one was the amended one with the changes.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Eighteen oh one, read the sign.
We will not use eighteen oh one, if, Ms. Clerk, if I'm right, we're gonna leave it at eighteen oh one out, we're gonna do eighteen hundred.
Uh, right, and I'm not even sure how that other one got on there.
And we're gonna amend eighteen hundred, correct?
I would.
So we would have to amend eighteen hundred to say making an ad hoc and voting member appointment.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Two ad hocks and one voting member.
Is that the motion you're wanting to make?
And the voting member will be the TRC.
Acting president, inter-president.
That is correct.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second to amend resolution eighteen hundred to say, um, we're gonna be making an ad hoc appointment in addition to a vote, ad hoc appointments addition to, um, a voting member. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And I make a motion for the reading of the resolution.
Second.
Okay. Okay. Motion is second, uh, for reading of resolution number eighteen hundred, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
A resolution making an ad hoc and a voting member appointment to the city manager search committee.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion is second for adoption of resolution eighteen hundred, any questions or comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Branham.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian.
Yes.
And Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
Seven yes votes.
Okay. Item JJ, the city council of the city of Papa Bluff will meet in a closed meeting in which they, they will discuss such matters which are exempted under the open meetings law, section six-one-oh-point-oh-one, oh-two-one-point-one, RSMO relative to litigation, six-one-oh-point-oh-two-one-point-two, RSMO relative to real estate, and six-one-oh-point-oh-two-one-point-three, RSMO relative to personnel.
Did we take care of the, the work, of the change order, was already done?
Yeah.
We're done on that?
We're done.
Okay.
And Mayor, make a motion, move into closed session after city manager's report.
Second. Motion is second to move into closed session after the city manager's report, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. City Manager.
I've been doing this job for two months now. Most of the complaints I've had are on high grass, which is understandable this time of the year. I mean, we have had rain that we normally don't get this much of the year. Uh, what I found out is when I get a complaint, I talk to code enforcement, eighty-five to ninety percent of those complaints, there's already been a ticket written to that person. So in the meantime, I'd ask the chief of police if he could start doing a weekly report for just code enforcement, and it lists the different violations that they do each day of the week, and how many violations were done. And I've got, uh, two weeks' worth here, I'm just gonna pass out to you, and we'll start giving those two weeks to you every council meeting, so you can see what they're actually doing. First page, you'll see that for a week, the first week or the second, June twenty-third to twenty-seventh, they had twenty-nine calls on, and these aren't necessarily calls, these are also, were they out, they were out driving around and finding these items also on their own. Uh, trash, twenty-nine, grass, thirty-nine, derelict vehicles, thirteen, buildings, two, other calls, eight.